Commissioner. If you're appearing today, please introduce and spell your names. And also if you're testifying. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Go ahead.
Yes, Chair, motion to approve the minutes of the 13th meeting as previously circulated.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee. Lee.
Mr. Rai, you're muted, but I vote aye.
I'm muted?
I also vote aye.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye. Shall I proceed without? I don't see Mr. Rai.
No, I should be back on, well.
You are.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
Could you give us the roll, please? We're on the minutes. Motion has been made in second.
Okay, we'll start again. Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Min, sorry. I'll call that our, Min.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. The minutes of the 13th meeting are approved. Let's move into agenda item number one in the public hearing. Application number 20-21626 from Pekaki Inc. Ms. Cole, I saw you on the screen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Naomi Cole, on behalf of the applicant. Present to my left is authorized agent Anna Maniwa. Spelled M-A-N-I-W-A. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Mr. Rai, do we have any registered testifiers?
We do not.
Okay, very good. Commissioners?
If I could put something-
Motion to- Go ahead.
Quickly put something into the record, please. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the September 10th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioners O'Donnell and Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. We're kind of sputtering here, getting started. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 20-21626.
Second the motion.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number one, application number 20-21626 is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Are we ready for agenda item number two? Mr. Rai?
We are ready.
Okay, calling agenda item number two. Application number 20-21819 from Olive Alamoana LLC. Commissioner Ling?
Yes, Chair, due to a conflict, I'm gonna have to recuse from agenda items number two and nine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Devin Nakoba, representing Olive Garden LLC. To my right is Vince Espino, E-S-P-I-N-O. He is the owner operator.
Thank you very much.
Go on, Chair. Do you wish to have the applicant and his advisor remove their face mask? Or can you hear them okay?
If there is nobody within six feet of them, they can remove their face mask.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. With that being said, Commissioners? Do you have any questions or type of action for agenda item number two?
Well-
Motion-
We have no changes to the preliminary report, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Vice Chair Min?
Yep, motion to approve application number 20-21819.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number two, application number 20-21819 is approved. Let's take agenda item number nine out of order. This is a request number 21-22453 from Olive Alamoana LLC. Mr. Nakoba again, please.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners. Devin Nakoba, once again representing Olive Garden Alamoana LLC. To my right is Vince Espino, E-S-P-I-N-O. The reason why we're coming in today is to take the unused days off of our temporary license and use them to cover us through this period while we await our final hearing.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Yes, motion to approve request number 21-22453.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number nine, request number 21-22453 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Can we have Commissioner Lee back into the hearings? Hearing room?
Is he back in? He's back in.
Okay, thank you very much. Are we ready for agenda item number three?
Yes, I see both authorized agents in the room.
Okay, so this is agenda item number three, application number 20-21896 from Aloha Prono Waikiki LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair. Oh, wait, Ross.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ross Shinzato, authorized agent, Aloha Prono Waikiki LLC.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I do have a few comments. Mr. Shinzato, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
In looking at the floor plan that you provided, it was kind of hard to determine where your space is, what's actually going on. It looks like you may be taking over a lobby area as your license premise. And the investigative report mentioned that you're gonna have cooking facilities and whatnot at your space. And it was kind of hard to tell in what was provided. Do you have any further information on that? Or can you share a little bit about how this space has been operating?
This is a- They use a lot of the lobby area. If you're looking at the page, towards the left is King Street. At the top of the page is Ala Care Street.
Now, this is Exhibit A2.
Yes. And towards the bottom of the page is a leased area. It has a counter and refrigerator drawn in. The larger space is part of the lobby area, used for co-working space.
The area highlighted in yellow on the- Is this open to the air? Is there anything defining the space? And it also mentioned that there's a Starbucks that is adjacent to that?
Yes, the Starbucks would be in that vendor one space.
And how do they access their space? Do they have to go through your premise to get to their front door?
The lobby area is open on the top and the right side. So they would cross through the licensed lobby area.
And currently you have- How are you defining that if it's open on the right and left, that's open to the exterior?
It's more lobby space on the top and the right.
Right, but so that lobby, is it an interior lobby or is it an exterior lobby?
It's interior lobby.
Oh, it's interior lobby. Okay, and are you able to provide us with a more detailed floor plan?
Yes, we can do that.
With all the cooking equipment and whatnot and kind of give us a better reference?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 20-21896. But please, Mr. Shinzato, provide a updated floor plan, updated form.
Second the motion.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. For agenda item number three, application number 20-21896 is approved. And we will be expecting more information, Mr. Shinzato, for the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, Mr. Rai?
Ms. Cole and her client are in the room and ready.
Thank you. This is application number 21-22374.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Naomi Cole, on behalf of the applicant. Present to my left is owner Tatsuya Ono. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 21-22374.
Second the motion.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number four, application number 21-22374 is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Are we ready for agenda item number five, Mr. Rai?
Room 111 is up, I think. Oh, yeah, Mr. Zibakalung is coming. There he is, okay.
Okay, calling agenda item number five, application number 21-22410 from TBB Holdings, Inc.
He's muted. Hold on a second. There we go.
I thought it was better that way. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zibakalung here on behalf of TBB Holdings. Directly behind me is Theodore Tsakiris. Thank you very much. We've reviewed the investigative report. I have no comments. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant or type of action?
Motion to approve application number 21-22410.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number five, application number 21-22410 is approved.
Aloha, Chair, Commissioners.
He's muted. Okay, Chair, you're muted. Oh, okay. Good work.
Can you hear me?
All right.
Agenda item number six. Application number 20-21931 from Kiolo Grocery and Liquors.
With respect to agenda item number six, Attorney James Lee was unable to attend today's hearing. He asked that this matter be rescheduled to a later date. So the Commission will continue this matter to the December 17th meeting, please.
Commissioners?
Motion to continue agenda item number six, application number 20-21931 to December 17th, 2020.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number six, application number 20-21931 is continued till December 17th, 2020. Calling agenda item number seven, Mr. Rai?
Yep, Ms. Yeo is in the room.
This is request number 21-22438 from Moku Kakaku LLC.
Aloha, Commissioners. This is Sarah Hill, S-A-R-A-H-I-L-L, appearing as the authorized agent for Moku Kakaku LLC.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
No questions, Commissioners.
Done.
Motion, go ahead. Motion to approve request number 21-22438.
Second the motion.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number seven, request number 21-22438 is approved.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eight. Mr. Rai?
Yes, Ms. Wu is in the room by phone.
Yeah, okay, that's why I got a phone on my screen?
Yep.
Okay, very good. So let's call agenda item number eight. Request number 21-22451 from Waikiki Gangnam Style, Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Yama on behalf of Waikiki Gangnam Style, Inc.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? Do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve request number 21-22451.
Second the motion.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number eight, request number 21-22451 is approved.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Let's go on to agenda item number 10. So this is application number 20-21596 from Oshie, Inc., DBA Sakura Terrace, for general restaurant, general license category two. And this is canceled December 3rd public hearing and set a date for a new public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Rai?
That is correct. And Mr. Otsuka is in the room.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, okay.
Yeah, with respect to-
What is the appropriate action, Mr. Rai?
Yeah, with respect to this matter, thank you, Mr. Otsuka, for appearing. What we're looking for is just to, previously the public hearing had been set for a December 3rd date. So there was an issue with the mail-out. So what the Commission will, we're asking the Commission to do is to, and I provided that language, cancel the public hearing set for December 2nd for this application. And then application number 21-21596 be set for a new public hearing. Date to be determined by the administrator. That is our typical language we use for, in these situations.
Okay, Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve that language?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Before I vote, is Vice Chair Donabon in the meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I vote aye. Agenda item number 10 is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's go to the, can I have a type of motion for the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order? Agenda items number 11 through 19 inclusive?
Yes, Chair, a motion for the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order for agenda items 11 through 19 inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. The acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in orders, agenda items number 11 through 19 inclusive, are approved. Moving into the adjudication. Hold on, I've got stuck pages, fat fingers. Okay, so this is, do we have the prosecuting attorney?
Yes, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair and Members of the Commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel, Pedro Gata.
Thank you very much. So let's call agenda item number 20, Harbor Pub, Inc.
And Mr. Coyle is in the room.
Yes. This is Michael Coyle, owner of Harbor Pub Incorporated.
Thank you, Chair.
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August 4th, 2020, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the 12 months beginning July 1st, 2019, ending June 30th, 2020, in violation of Rule 3-81-17.54 Subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number 20, the no contest plea is accepted.
Chair, I'm sorry, Chair and Members of the Commission, this is the second time that this licensee has been late in filing their GLS. The first time was in fiscal year 2016. In this case, they were three days late. My recommended fine is $250.
Sir, any comment?
Uh, no, it's definitely our fault. We have had the same accountant for 25 years and just fell through the cracks. But I assure you, it won't happen again. And our humble apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number 20, the recommended fine is approved.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 21, Smith &amp; Kings Restaurant and Bar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and deny the allegations asked that be set for a contested adjudication hearing.
Pedro Gata?
Based on Mr. Kyuchi's denial of the allegation, we're gonna move to continue this to the next available hearing for adjudication.
Motion to continue agenda item 21, Smith &amp; Kings, for a contested hearing, the next available date.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number 21 is continued to the next available adjudications, contested adjudications. Thank you, Mr. Kyuchi.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 22, Kiola Beers.
Oh, there she is.
What does G mean?
That's Jin San Oak. Jin San Oak is in the room.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August 4th, 2020, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the 12 months beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, in violation of Rule 3-81-17.54 Subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, Oak, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number 22, the no contest plea is accepted.
Chair and Members of the Commission, this is the second time that this licensee has filed the GLS late. The first time was in fiscal year 2019. They have no outstanding fees. They paid six days late. Recommended fine is $250.
Mr. Oak, any comment?
No.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $250.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Rai, the roll, please.
Lee?
Aye.
Min?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
O'Donnell?
Aye. Agenda item number 22, recommended fine is approved. Following agenda item number 23.
Yeah, Ms. Akina is in the room.
Okay, this is agenda item number 23, Commissioners, Tree Tops at Paradise Park Restaurant.
Ms. Akina?
Hello?
There we go.
Hi, please. Yes, unmute yourself and introduce yourself, please. You're muted.
Okay, now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name is June Akina from DRW, Inc., for Tree Top Restaurant and the agent, and their accountant.
Thank you.
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August 4th, 2020, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by licensee during the 12 months beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, in violation of Rule 3-81-17.54 Subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ms. Akina, how would you like to plead?
Well, I'm just not sure. I did send in my report, but I emailed it. I sent the doc.
Ma'am, sorry, you need to enter a plea. You can plead no contest, or you can accept the charges, or deny the charges.
I want to deny the charges.
Okay, if you're gonna deny the charges, then we'll reschedule you. Okay, if you're gonna deny the charges, then we'll reschedule you for a contested hearing.
Okay.
Uh, where you can state your case, is that what you'd like to do?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Ogata, can you, um, uh, arrange with the licensee when to have a contested hearing?
Uh, yes, Vice Chair Comis- Vice Chairman, no, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman. Um, based on her recommendation, representation, we are going to be moving to continue this to, uh, the next available date for a contested hearing.
Okay. Uh, motion to, a motion to contin- sorry, is somebody trying to talk? Okay. Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-three, uh, to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Rai, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-three is continued to the next available adjudication hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Akina.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-four. Tropics Ale House Waikiki.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Rai, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Chair members of the Commission, this is the second time this licensee has filed their GLS late, the first time was in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, they were six days late. There are no outstanding fees, recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars.
Go ahead, Mr. Kyuchi.
Yeah, Mr. Kashani, we called Mr. Kashani on the date that the GLS was due. Um, he didn't, he didn't bring the GLS in, he sent it in by email, which is obviously not allowed because you gotta make a payment at the same time. So, when he finally brought it in, it was six days late. He did email it to the Commission on that date, but that doesn't get you out of the violation.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Rai, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the recommended fine is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Agenda item number twenty-five. King's Place.
Okay, we're, we're wait, uh, actually, the representative was present and has exited out. She's coming back in. She's been in the room the entire hearing, this poor thing. Okay, she's in, she just needs to unmute herself. Okay, she's live now, okay?
Okay, this is agenda item number twenty-five, King's Place.
Hi, my name is King Pety, P E T T Y, Iwin Akamini, A K A K M I N E, King Place.
Thank you.
Licensee, oh, sorry, licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, two thousand twenty. A report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ma'am, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Rai, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the no contest plea is accepted.
Chair members of the Commission, this is the second time this licensee has been, has been late with their GLS, the first time was in fiscal year two thousand sixteen. There are no outstanding fees, and she was nine days late, recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars. Thank you.
Ma'am, do you have any comment? You have any comment, anything to say?
No.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Rai, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the recommended fine is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Calling the, um, agenda item number twenty-seven. Do we have any administrative matters, Mr. Rai?
One more, twenty-six.
Hold on a minute, how did I miss that?
Wish for thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Himalayan Kitchen LLC.
Um, Chair and members of the Commission, for this, um, particular matter, the licensee was unable to be present. As such, I'm moving to continue this hearing to December tenth, and I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-six, Himalayan Kitchen, to December tenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Been moved in second, Mr. Rai, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-six is continued till December tenth, two thousand twenty. Let's move on to agenda item number twenty-seven, Mr. Rai.
I don't have anything further to report other than what was in the today's weekly report.
Thank you very much.
Nothing from me, thank you, folks, good job.
Thank you so much, who is that, Pacaro?
Yeah.
Thank you, meeting, adjourned.